Members, please take your seats. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. This council will now come to order. Asking for all visitors to please retire outside the rails. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Thank you. Please take all conversations outside the council chambers. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Pastor Alfredo Padraza of One Cross Church. He is here today as the guest of the leader of the Kennison Caucus, Councilman Ketsey Lazada. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Oh, how you doing? God bless you. Let's bow down on our head. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks. In the name of Jesus, Father, we ask you to put your covenant over Philadelphia, Father God. Father, we ask you to protect the council. Father, to protect the mayor, to protect the city brotherly love, Father God. Father, give them wisdom, give them understanding, Father God. Father God, you picked these people today, Father God, for a reason. It's their season, Father God. And we ask in the name of Jesus, Father, to give them peace, to all the strength, to take them out and give them peace and love and understanding, Father God. The Father, for they can understand that you made, you picked them, for they can be on top and not in the bottom, for they can be on the front and not in the back, for they can be head and not tail, for they can be winners and not losers, Father God. Father God, we ask you, in the name of Jesus, Father God, whatever they sign, Father, anoint their eyes, Father God, for they can see things that other people cannot see, Father God. Anoint their ears, for they can be able to hear your voice, Father God. When they find themselves in trouble, in danger, whatever, Father God, so they can be able to listen to your voice, Father God. Anoint their mouth, Father God, for they can be bold and they can be able to say things that other people do not dare to say, Father God. Father, anoint their hands, Father God, whatever they sign, Father God, they can receive it by your power, Father God. Use this Philadelphia, Father God. Protect the police of the Philadelphia, Father God. Give them wisdom, hallelujah, Father, that they put in their family to the side, for they can protect Philadelphia, protect all of us, Father God. We give you glory, we give you honor, Father God, because I know that you picked them for this season. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and the church say, amen. God bless you.
Counsel will be at ease. The chair thanks the pastor for his invocation. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 13, 2025 be approved.
It has been moved in propriety second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 13, of 2025 stand approved. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it and the journal is approved. The next order of business is the request of leave of absence. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
On behalf of the minority party, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you very much. The chair thanks the council member. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved in propriety second that the legislative matters stated by Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today, should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. The chair acknowledges in the chambers today, the Honorable District Attorney Larry Krasner. Thank you for joining us. The chair also acknowledges in our chamber today, the Honorable Alice Beck Superior Court Judge. Give her a round of applause as well. At this moment, the chair recognizes the gentleman from the Fourth Councilmatic District, the Honorable Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please join me in recognizing the ambassadors from Roxboro High School who are here to witness democracy at a local level. Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, who will present a resolution honoring and recognizing the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Incorporated, Pennsylvania Chapter, on their annual legislative day and for their dedication of advancing gender and racial equity and empowering black women during Women's History Month. Will Naisha Chapman, the president, and those accompanying her, please join the council Councilmember Jamie Gartier, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Ketsey Lazada.
So, please join me in welcoming the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Pennsylvania Chapter. We have always in this country been led by strong women of color, going back to Sojourner Truth for Harriet Tubman, more recently with Mayor, 100th Mayor of the City of Philadelphia as a member. Also, in these chambers, in honor of Women's History Month, don't forget Dr. Ethel Allen, who was the first woman of color. And remember, O'Neill reminds us that she was a Republican. But...
And was a district now.
And was a...
And an at-large council member.
So, for a very long time, we've been lucky, fortunate, to be guided by a North Star that women in this country pointed to. To quote the famous American philosopher Beyonce, she asked the question, "Who runs the world?"
Girls!
Yes. But on a more serious note, I have always talked to the brothers in the barbershop and said, "Whoa, we better get our game together because they are running laps around us." If you attend their banquets or luncheons, if you attend, you're blessed to be able to attend their workshops, they are putting the work in to move us to that North Star as a community, as a city, and as a nation, and therefore be it... Another woman.
Well, first, thank you so much to my district colleague and member, Councilmember Curtis Jones, for always recognizing the women of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Pennsylvania Chapter, which I am proud to be a member of the coalition, joining in '21. So shout out to '21. But I also wanted to remember and honor the members of Philadelphia City Council who were also members of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Pennsylvania Chapter, and Marion B. Tasco, the former councilwoman from the Ninth Councilmatic District, my mentor, Blondell Reynolds Brown, who served at large, and also our colleague, who you will hear from, Councilmember Cindy Bass, serving the Eighth District, as well as former council member and now 100th Mayor of the City of Philadelphia, Sherrell L. Parker. I am so honored and privileged to be a member, and today, we are honoring and recognizing the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Incorporated, Pennsylvania Chapter, on our annual legislative day and for our dedication to advancing gender and racial equity and empowering black women during Women's History Month. Whereas, the Coalition of Black Women was founded and formed in 1970 by 24 visionary black women led by Edna Beach gathered in New York City to address social, economic, and political issues impacting their families and communities, giving rise to the Coalition of 100 Black Women, a key organization dedicated to advancing gender and racial equity and... And also must honor the forever Councilwoman Janie L. Blackwell, also member of the coalition, and...
Whereas, under Edna Beach's leadership... Yes, a brother up here too, Council President. Whereas, under Edna Beach's leadership, the Coalition addressed the root causes of inequality, mobilized black women who shared their vision, and became a visible force advocating for the empowerment of black women in both the public and private sectors, of which my beloved wife is of them, and...
Smart man, smart man.
And whereas, by 1981, the New York Coalition had over 500 members, and as they gained recognition, they expanded their mission and vision nationwide. On October 24 of that year, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Incorporated was formed, with Jewel Jackson McCabe selected as their first national president, and...
The chair also recognizes Councilman Rue Landau and Nina Maugh joining.
Whereas, in 1981, Jewel Jackson McCabe encouraged Sylvia Webster of Pennsylvania Chapter, a local chapter embracing the idea, Webster chartered the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc., Pennsylvania Chapter, with 42 progressive women, and...
Whereas, over the years, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc., PA Chapter, NC 100 BWPA, has grown to 200 members and has worked tirelessly to advocate for black women and girls advancing leadership development, gender equity, and social justice, particularly in the areas of health, education, and economic empowerment, while empowering thousands of black women to lead in their communities' workplaces and beyond, and...
And whereas, NC 100 BWPA continues to be a powerful voice of gender equity and socio-political advancement, driving meaningful change to benefit black women and girls. Additionally, NC 100 BWPA plays a role in fulfilling the National Coalition's vision of a world where socioeconomic inequity does not exist for black women and girls, and...
Whereas, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women members consist of a dynamic network of progressive black women, including physicians, lawyers, educators, entrepreneurs, and other skilled professionals who serve as change agents. They have recognized various needs in the Philadelphia community and contributed in ways, including advocating for racial and social justice while striving to create a positive impact in their communities, and...
Whereas, NC 100 BWPA remains committed to mentoring leadership development and fostering future generations of black women leaders, recognizing that they are essential to leadership continuity and must continue to lead the charge in affecting positive change, and...
And whereas, the National Coalition for 100 Black Women, Pennsylvania Chapters, continue success and impact are a testament to the strength, determination, and vision of our founders, who have bridged generational gaps, created programs that respond to the unique needs of our communities, and maintained a steadfast focus on empowering black women through advocacy, education, and strategic partnerships. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and recognizes the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Incorporated, Pennsylvania Chapter, for our tireless dedication to advancing gender and racial equity, our unwavering commitment to the empowerment of black women, and our significant contributions to shaping the future of leadership and advocacy for women of color across the United States of America. Congratulations and thank you, Councilmember Jones.
Mr. President, a special shout out to Wilhelmina Moore and Sharlita Davis, who makes me and you buy tables every year.
The chair recognizes the President, Council... President Naishah Chapman.
Thank you.
Naisha Chapman.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Council President Johnson, members of City Council, and distinguished guests. On behalf of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Pennsylvania Chapter, I am honored to stand before you today as we recognize our annual legislative day, a day dedicated to uplifting the voices of black women and advocating for the policies that shape our communities. For over 43 years, our chapter has worked tirelessly to advocate for equity, economic justice, health, education, and civic engagement for black women and girls in the Philadelphia area and surrounding counties. We know that when black women thrive, our families, our neighborhoods, and our entire city prospers. Today, as we gather in this chamber, we reaffirm our commitment to partnership and progress. We are here to engage, to collaborate, and to ensure that the policies crafted within these walls reflect the needs of the people that we serve. This year, we are especially focused on key legislative priorities that will impact thousands of Philadelphians, including strengthening economic opportunities for black-owned businesses by advocating for stronger enforcement of minority participation in city contracts, addressing the affordable housing crisis by supporting policies that expand access and protect renters from predatory practices, improving black maternal health by sustaining and increasing our funding for critical services that support mothers and babies, ensuring educational equity by calling for transparency and reforms in school discipline policies. We believe that this not only... These not only are not just... I'm sorry. We believe these are not just policy issues, these are moral imperatives that demand our collective action. City Council, we thank you for your leadership and your partnership in this work. We look forward to continuing these conversations today and in the weeks and months ahead. Together, we can build a Philadelphia that truly reflects equity, access, and opportunity for all. We thank you again for this resolution and honor today, and we look forward to continue to work with you.
Counsel will be at ease.
Thank you, Council President. As we celebrate Women's History Month, I'd like you all to help me welcome three guests to chambers today, who I'm also recognizing with a privilege resolution later on in session. But wanted to welcome them and thank them publicly for everything they do in our community. That is Elaine Gonzalez Johnson, please stand, Bianca Solari, and Coach Zad Datsun. Thank you all ladies, thank you ladies for changing the community that we all serve.
Thank you. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks, who presented a resolution recognizing March 20 of 2025 as Children's First Day in the City of Philadelphia. Will Donna Cooper and those accompanying her, please join the council member at the podium. podium. Joining member Brooks are members O'Rourke, Squilla, Landau, Phillips, Gaultier, Lazada, Gilmore Richardson, Amai, and Bass.
All right. Thank you to my colleagues who are joining me today and celebrating Children First on their 45th birthday. This organization is a driving force beyond so much of the work and progress we've made for young people over the past five decades. From full-day kindergarten to set the passes for Philly students, many of the things we take for granted today were made possible through the work of Children First. Year after year, they have spoken up for Philadelphia's young people, laying out the data, the research, and the detailed policy proposals that compel elected leaders to invest in our children. As a longtime education activist, I know these wins are not easy. I have seen Children First take the fight for our children from neighborhood elementary schools all the way to the halls of power in Harrisburg. Every time, we've had a win. Children First has been a part of the push that made it happen. Their work has impacted generations of Philadelphians and will continue to brighten the future of generations to come. I'm so glad to have a chance to thank and congratulate Executive Director Donna Cooper and all the folks at Children First for their lasting contributions to the city. Recognizing March 20, 2025, as Children First Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Whereas, in 1978, Christie Cricket Hastings, Ruth Madden, Happy Fernandez, Marcin Madelman, Margaret Estey, Lucy Sayer founded Philadelphia Public Citizens for Children and Youth, PCCY, to ensure government agencies and nonprofit institutions were fulfilling their responsibilities to improve the lives of the city's youth. And.
Whereas, PCCY immediately formed a task force on juvenile justice and has pushed for dozens of reforms over the past 45 years, including leading the 2018 advocacy to create the Youth Residential Placement Task Force established in 2018, and the Youth Ombudsman's Office created in 2022, that added a layer of protection for children who are institutionalized. And whereas, PCCY's inaugural report, Status of Children and Youth in Philadelphia in 1985, establishing its reputation for basing PCCY's advocacy efforts on strong research and analysis. The 2025 report on the status of children found that 47% of Philadelphia's families need a better partner in government to meet the basic needs for healthy child development of their children. And.
These citizens, activists, pushed to redress the Rizzo administration's legacy of disinvestment in children, including failure to repair playgrounds, reduction in youth programs, and hostility toward black teens who protested for better public schools. And.
Whereas, PCCY played a multi-decade role in meeting the health care needs of children, including persuading the city to create three teen-focused health clinics, providing more than 10,000 children free eye exams and dental care, playing a leadership role in the state's enactment of the Children's Health Insurance Program, which is CHIP in 1992, and its current statewide campaign addressing the needs of 147,000 uninsured children. And whereas, in 1990, PCCY sought to address the lifetime consequences of childhood lead poisoning, paving the way for City Council to pass groundbreaking legislation, lead poisoning prevention ordinances in 2012 and 2018 that reduced childhood exposure to lead by more than 50%. And.
Whereas, PCCY successfully petitioned to get every city pool open for the summer of 1989 and in 1993, to dramatically expand the Summer Play Streets Program that now provides safe spaces for play and summer meals for children living on nearly 350 blocks in the city. And whereas, in 1995, Mayor Rendell credited PCCY for convincing him to make full-day kindergarten universally available. Mayor Street, in response to a PCCY call to action, created the Office of Early Childhood Education in 1999. And in 2022, Mayor Kenny backed the organization's call for universal pre-K, paving the way for the Philly pre-K program that now serves more than 5,000 children. And.
Whereas, in 1998, when new stadiums were being constructed, PCCY worked with leaders in council to ensure that $1 of every ticket sold at new venues would support after-school programs for children, generating more than $20 million for youth programs. And whereas, in 2003, PCCY convinced the state that funding rural transit but not Philadelphia school transit was unfair, 65,000 public school students now travel to school for free in Philadelphia, just like peers across the state. And.
Whereas, PCCY led the effort to amend the Home Rule Charter in 2007 to create the Philadelphia Youth Commission, which continues to give 21 youth leaders and their peers a formal perch to advise council and the mayor. Whereas, youth and parents call on PCCY to tackle educational equality-making, the case to improve reading instruction, which caused PCCY to partner with UAC to form the Read by Fourth Campaign. And parents and youth demanded access to mental health services for children and youth, a cause now being advanced by the newly-minted Strong Minds Bright Futures Partnership. And.
Whereas, PCCY ran successful campaigns to allocate 1% of the sales tax and a portion of the cigarette tax to generate more than $170 million annually for public schools, and championed the sweetened beverage tax, which supports 352 Philly pre-K programs, paid for the upgrade of more than 30 recreation centers with 40 more in the pipeline, and funds 20 community schools. And whereas, in 2021, PCCY changed its name to Children First to reinforce its mission of putting children first in public policy and practices. Philadelphia is a better place because of the focused mission and advocacy efforts of Children First. And.
Whereas, since 1980, Children First has rallied thousands of parents to call on elected officials to do more to meet the needs of children, helping them make demands on City Council every year, and taking busloads of Philadelphians to Harrisburg. And whereas, in the last 10 years, these advocacy efforts caused the state and city to increase investments in Philadelphia's children by more than $2 billion. And.
Whereas, since its earliest years, the organization benefited from long-serving visionary and uniquely dedicated leaders, starting with Shelly Yanoff, who led the charge for children there for 25 years, followed by her successor, Donna Cooper, who has been here at the helm for 13 dedicated years. Now therefore be it.
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes March 20th, 2025, as Children's First Day in Philadelphia. Further resolved that an in-growth copy of this resolution be presented to Children First as an expression of gratitude and admiration of the Council of the City of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Donna Cooper.
Thank you very much. Especially thank you, Councilperson Brooks, for being the sponsor of this resolution. I've never spoken from this point of view. This is fascinating. I'm usually over there. So I want to say, you know, this council was formed 73 years ago, and this is your, I think, 19th council meeting session. And for two-thirds of the life of this council, PCCY or Children First has been here working side by side with you. And we're grateful to all of your effort to work with us. You'll notice that many of us are wearing white sneakers today, and we are doing that because the memes that Councilwoman O'Rourke referenced, they walk these halls with sneakers because they knew the fight for kids had to be tireless, and they didn't want their feet to get tired. So today, we wear them, and we'll probably keep wearing them because it's so much better. Only eight years after we were founded, the great Marion Tasco was elected to this council, and for 28 years, she served on behalf of the citizens of Philadelphia, and she and the great Shelly Yanoff were joined at the hip advancing legislation for kids. And in 2000, another champion for kids was elected, Blondell Reynolds Brown. And I know Blondell wanted to be here today. She and I spoke last week, but she could not come. But together with Marion, they were a dynamic duo, using every tool in the toolbook to pass legislation for kids in every session. And they were helped by Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilperson Happy Fernandez, John Street, Maria Canyona Sanchez, and Helen Gim. All used their positions to help Marion and Blondell make it possible for the great work you heard about in our resolution. We can only do as good as our councilpersons are. While I'm very grateful to this council for taking the time to call out our accomplishments because I know your schedule is so busy, I want to thank the council as a body, you now and your predecessors, for working with us to boldly stand up for children. Your courage and vision has caused stadium owners, and landlords, and lawyers, and insurance companies, and large companies, at times a reluctant meager, to stoop down to the eye level of children, and from that vantage point, see that they have a role in playing to give the children of the city what they need to grow up and run our city, and for them to become the stadium owners, the lawyers, the landlords, the insurance companies, the councilpersons, and even the mayor. That's our goal. From the youth sports leagues that build the leadership that many of you see as how you got your start as young leaders, to the superlative high schools that I hear you speak about, that you graduated from and owe your start, to the protections offered by our health centers and social services that some of you have relied on when things were hard, to the leadership opportunities, even those you created today with the students from Roxborough High, that create an opportunity for children to see democracy in action. Children First is grateful for what you do, and we stand with you, continue to make it possible. And there's so much more we need to do together. We're inspired by the work in this session of councilpersons Phillips and Landau to give our kids a better second chance, and we hope that the great Alice Beck and Larry Krasner will become champions with them in our changes that we hope for juvenile justice. Councilperson Gilmore Richardson was the technician who crafted the most protective lead ordinance in the nation, and we will rely on her expertise and leadership to do all we can to get that number of children poisoned by lead to zero. We are a partner in this council with the great persons, councilpersons Brooks and Isaiah Thompson, working to get Thomas, working together to make our schools better and to deliver on educational justice. And we are partners with councilperson Squilla and our great council president Kenyatta Johnson, who championed the need to give every child in this city access to great, high-quality pre-K. These councilmen persons do what they do because they have the cooperation and support of all of their colleagues. They are not doing this alone, and we know that we have you as our partners. We are deeply grateful to each of you, every one of you members of council. And as Shelly Yanoff would say at the close of every day, I hope you will continue, and we will all continue to ask ourselves, what are we doing for kids today? Thank you. It is-- With the permission of the Council President, I am very grateful to introduce Jasmine Jones to you, one of our parent advoc--sorry. Yeah, Jasmine to you, my apologies. And because she's a parent advocate, and what we're doing, we do with parents every day in the city, and I hope you listen to her carefully.
Good morning. My name is Jasmine Banks, and I am a grateful Children's First parent advocate. I am also a person who has raised 15, yes, one, five children, and I have adopted five older sons. So I stand here today before you as an at-risk parent during Women's History Month to honor and acknowledge one of the most amazing and influential organizations in my life, that being Children's First, a powerful organization which is celebrating 45 years of supporting youth like mine. And I happen to agree with former Philadelphia Mayor and Pennsylvania Governor Ed Rendell, who said that Donna Cooper, the powerful executive director of Children's First, is the conscience and soul of his administration. However, I'd like to add, and I strongly believe that many other Children's First parent advocates would agree with me, that the entire hard-working, dedicated, and committed staff at Children's First, under the leadership of Donna Cooper, collectively are the conscience and soul of all parents in Philadelphia. In short, I say this because they are also approachable, courageous, ethical, inspiring, serves as role models, teachers and mentors. And what is most impressive to me is that they are also integrative, always involving parents and caregivers in all of their initiatives, and connecting us to opportunities to learn, grow, heal, and serve. And it is these combined qualities that places them into a league of their own, causing them to stand out from other nonprofits and community-based organizations. And despite all of these attributes and all of these years of dedicated service to our youth, they, and now we, since I am now a part of Children's First forever, continue to face tremendous resistance with providing basic and essential dedicated funding to support our most vulnerable youth, like maintaining the soda tax, for example. However, I assure you that we will not give up, nor will we go away. Although the struggle continues, victory is certain. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Council will be at ease.
The council will be at ease. Before we move on to the next order of business, the Chair wants to acknowledge the birthday of our colleague, Councilmember Jim Harity. Give him a round of applause. And Councilmember Mike Driscoll. Give him a round of applause. And also, Mike Driscoll's dad turns 101 years old today. Some good genes. Happy birthday, members. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk.
To the president? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the president and members of the council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, the following proposed: An Ordinance repealing in its entirety the following ordinances, all approved on December 23, 2024. Bill Number 240966 granting the necessary authorizations for the city to help facilitate development of a new arena for the Philadelphia 76ers. Bill Number 240967 authorizing the execution of a service agreement between the city and paid. And Bill Number 240968 authorizing the striking of Filbert Street from 10th Street to 11th Street from the city plan. Bill Number 240969 authorizing striking certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street from the city plan. Bill Number 240970 authorizing the construction and maintenance of various right-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of the proposed arena. Bill Number 240963 amending the existing gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District in the area of the proposed arena. And Bill Number 240973 approving the amendment of a neighborhood improvement district in the arena of the proposed... in the area of the proposed arena. And an ordinance repealing in its entirety, Bill Number 240972 approved December 23, 2024, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Section 14-906 entitled Market Street East Sign Regulations, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance repealing in its entirety, Bill Number 240971 approved December 23, 2024, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending certain definitions relating to signs, creating an area arena with the CTR Center-City Overlay District Overlay, and making related changes including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with the zoning rules for a proposed arena in Center City, and approving a master plan for the arena area, all under certain terms and conditions. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 708 North Sedgwick Street, 710 North Sedgwick Street, 714 and 723 North Sedgwick Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And I am pleased to advise you that on March 19, 2025, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on March 6, 2025. Bill Number 241081, 241083, 241107, 250002, 250004, 250005, 250006, 250007, 250008, 250009, 250046, 250047, 250048, 250049, 250069, and 250070. Council President, there are no further communications in my possession.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, members of the viewing public. Today, I have no bills or resolutions or introductions today. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Nothing today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gautier.
Good morning, Council President. Today, I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 708, 710, 714, and 723 North Sedgwick Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Whip Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Today, I have three privileged resolutions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing March as National Nutrition Month in the City of Philadelphia to raise awareness of the importance of nutrition education and healthy eating habits, and to recognize the contributions of Vetri Community Partnership in promoting health and wellness.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing March 2025 as Creative and Nighttime Economies and Arts in Education Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings on the status, conditions, operations, and economic factors at the Philadelphia Museum of Art to ensure the future of the city cornerstone as we prepare to welcome the world in 2026.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes a gentleman from the Fourth Councilmatic District, Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I introduce one privileged resolution and five non-privileged resolutions on my own behalf.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged and non-privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring victim-witness services of South Philadelphia for 35 years of dedicated service to those affected by violence in South Philadelphia and across the city.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Malika Rahman to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Gilberto Gonzalez to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Michelle Enix Kenny to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Latonya Whitehead to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution reappointing Hakim Pia to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the public. I have two privileged resolutions and one non-privileged resolution, and I ask to be recognized for just a second on one of the privileged resolutions, upon its reading.
The Chair recognizes... The Chair asks the clerk to please read the title of the privileged and non-privileged resolutions.
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of the Honorable Phyllis W. Beck, retired judge of the Superior Court, who was a treasured member of the Philadelphia legal community, philanthropist, trailblazer, and mentor.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just wanted to take one moment to recognize the life and legacy of Judge Phyllis Beck. She was a trailblazer. She broke so many boundaries, and she was a mentor, a friend, and just an incredible colleague of the legal community. She was a mentor of mine. I was a Beck Fellow when I went, when I taught at Temple Law School. We're so honored to have her daughter here, Judge Alice Beck Dubois, as well as her niece, and so many of our friends as well, who will hear during public comment, but thank you so much for that moment.
You're welcome. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
A privileged resolution declaring March 17 through March 21, 2025, as a National LGBTQ Health Awareness Week in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution condemning President Donald J. Trump and his administration for their decision to suspend income-driven student loan repayment plans, and for politicizing the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program to target advocates working to oppose his anti-immigrant, anti-trans, and anti-free speech agenda.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketty Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. Bienvenidos a todos. Today, I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing women in the City of Philadelphia who are leading impactful initiatives in health, wellness, and fitness that empower, connect, and uplift women.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from the Fifth Councilmatic District, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and expressing gratitude to Nicole Bartlett for her work helping grieving families cope with loss and mentoring young women in Philadelphia and across the country on the occasion of Women's History Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes the birthday boy, Councilmember Jim Harity.
Council President, I have nothing today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Minority Whip, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to introduce today.
The Chair recognizes the next birthday boy, Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the dedicated employees of the Philadelphia Gas Works and recognition of Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day on March 18, 2025.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-900 Parking Regulations and Penalties, and Chapter 12-2800 Administrative Adjudication of Parking Violations of the Philadelphia Code, revising penalties related to parking certain large vehicles, including boats, motorhomes, house coaches, house trailers, truck campers, recreational cargo trailers, and recreational trailers, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 220454, approved November 30, 2022, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Vacating of Cruz Town Road from Norwalk Road to Its Terminus South Westwardly Therefrom, Under Certain Terms and Conditions", by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance repealing in its entirety, Bill Number 240972, approved December 23, 2024, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Section 14-906 entitled Market Street East Sign Regulations, all under certain terms and conditions."
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance repealing in its entirety, Bill Number 240971, approved December 23, 2024, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending certain definitions relating to signs, creating an area arena within the Center-City Overlay District Overlay, and making related changes including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with the zoning rules for a proposed arena in Center City, and approving a master plan for the arena area, all under certain terms and conditions."
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance repealing in its entirety, the following ordinances, all approved December 23, 2024. Bill Number 240966 granting the necessary authorizations for the city to help facilitate development of a new arena for the Philadelphia 76ers. Bill Number 240967 authorizing the execution of a service agreement between the city and paid. Bill Number 240968 authorizing striking Filbert Street from 10th Street to 11th Street from the city plan. Bill Number 240969 authorizing striking certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street from the city plan. Bill Number 240970 authorizing the construction and maintenance of various right-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of the proposed arena. Bill Number 240963 amending the existing gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District in the arena, in the area of the proposed arena. And Bill Number 240973 approving the amendment of a neighborhood improvement district in the area of the proposed arena.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is reports from committees. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Will the chief clerk please read the report?
To the Committee on Rules, to which were referred the following bill. Bill Number 240333, an ordinance amending Section 14-533 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District, to update the illustrative maps to reflect recent redistricting changes, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Rules, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bill just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved in propriety seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of this bill just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was seenified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committees with suspension of rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 250221, 240427-AA, 250100, and 250147. The following bills and resolutions on... The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. 250168 and 240665. 250066 is being amended.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name and his hash in at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commentators each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Due to today's volume, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments. On the same subject matter, I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Judge Alice Beck Duboe. May Jeremy Blattstein, Kate Perez, Kenneth Behr, Susan Post and Garrett Odwire also make their way to the podium.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm Alice Beck Duboe. I'm Phyllis Beck's daughter. I'm here speaking on behalf of the resolution honoring the life of my mom who recently passed away. I just wanted to start by thanking Councilman Landau for introducing this resolution that honors my mother's life. The admiration that I had, that my mother had for Councilwoman Landau was mutual. She was thrilled that Councilwoman Landau was a Beck scholar at Temple Law School, which meant that when Councilwoman Landau ran for city council, we had no choice. We had to vote for Councilwoman Landau, and she was thrilled that she won. I also do want to thank city council as a whole for considering this resolution. My mom cared deeply about Philadelphia. She cared most deeply about government and politics and city council. It's what she talked about a lot. Some of you may know I'm married to Rob Duboe, who is the finance director, and I think I might have been her special child because Rob and I came to dinner every Sunday night, and the first question out of her mouth was, "So, Rob, what's going on in the city?" And Rob always had some insight into what was going on. So I just want to thank you so much for considering this. It's really meaningful to me and my brothers and my sisters and her friends and her grandkids because this is an institution that she had tremendous respect for, and we really appreciate your making the effort to pass a resolution regarding her life. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, city council. My name is Jeremy Blattstein. We're talking about two different bills today. The first bill is 240427-AA. It's the nonconformity bill. There's been a lot of pushback. Obviously, seven out of the 10 districts are against this bill. They've opted out. Why? Because it's going to be a burden on L and I and the ZBA. The ZBA is already backed up. To put this bill in there now is not a good idea. So I challenge each and every one of you to actually take a stand because it's not going to just affect these three districts. It's going to affect the whole city of Philadelphia. It is going to force more properties to go to the ZBA. It is going to put an undue burden on small businesses and on your constituents. So I really, 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 really do think you should really look at voting no for this bill. It's not something that's just going to affect these three districts. Because every time you go to the ZBA, guess what happens? It's going to take three to six months, and it's going to be backed up, and it's not going to end well for your constituents. So you can say, "Oh, I'm going to opt my district out, Council Act prerogative." Oh, Council Act prerogative, we love that. But this is a time where you actually could use the reverse Council Act prerogative, you at large members, and take a stand, and let's rework this and figure out how to fix this bill. All right, the last thing we're talking about. We're talking about SEPTA. Raise your hand if you wrote SEPTA in the last week. Oh, the glorious city council president Johnson and me caught the Broad Street line from Tascamorris up to City Hall. We like to ride the ride. It really is important to fund SEPTA, right? SEPTA is crucial to our city, and I really appreciate you this morning riding, and I really think that it's something that should be worked into each of your schedules. Ride it once a week, ride the ride, and let's grow Philly 22 milli. Thank you.
We have Kate Perez, Kenneth Behr, Susan Post, Garrett Odwire, and may David Ford and Michael McDonough also make their way to the podium.
Kate Perez condemning cuts to the Housing and Urban Development Department and asking us to take it a step further and condemn Trump bypassing Congress to bomb Yemen, targeting medical facilities and killing more than 151 civilians in just two days. We have an unelected foreign billionaire gutting fair housing and social programs, forcing Americans to fight for resources instead of taxing the wealthy. During our housing, employment and education crisis, we should also condemn Trump's prior knowledge and more than $12 billion of material support to the occupation's full resumation of its ethnic cleansing campaign on Tuesday that all comes at the expense of the American taxpayer. Hamas offered to return the hostages for a permanent truce, and our sister city slaughtered more than 970 civilians in just two days, mostly children. Using Google and Amazon's Project Nimbus, the IOF know exactly who is in the building and where, making each murder a deliberate choice that our taxes paid for instead of sustaining fair housing in our country. All aid to Gaza has been cut off since March 2nd, surgeries, intubations and amputations done while patients are wide awake, and still Philadelphia has done nothing to stop manufacturers or ports in our city from shipping more missiles and robot dogs. This resolution reaffirms the city's commitment to protect the rights of our most vulnerable residents. Our administration is using AI to comb through social media accounts and using McCarthy era tactics to label activists and immigrants, terrorist sympathizers or gang affiliated to immediately strip their rights and have ICE detain, deport or disappear people without proof or due process. Protecting our rights means creating more safety nets as the administration continues to tear them down, creating offices to take over their work, enacting rent freezes, sanctuary policies, refusing the presence of ICE, refusing to conflate anti-Zionism with antisemitism. We normalize apartheid and genocide by maintaining our sister-city relationship and Fetterman accepting a silver-plated beeper from an internationally-wanted war criminal. Cruelty we send abroad turns inward as temple admin bring in PPD to surveil Jewish voices for peace. Arms embargo now, free Palestine.
My name is Kenneth Behr. I'm here on behalf of Bill Number 250221. I'm a member of Power Interfaith. Okay, thank you. Which is in, representing Arch Street United Methodist Church, which is in Councilmember Squilla's district. There are many different housing issues confronting the city, but I am most concerned about making improvements for the homeless and ensuring that they minimally have consistent roofs over their heads. The overall housing action plan for Philadelphia has an impressive series of ways to improve the housing status for those who already have owned or rented residence. The truly homeless have a much smaller array of services. A homeless individual can be provided emergency shelter during extreme cold weather. Their visits to intact or drop-in centers may provide them meals, medical services, showers, laundry, et cetera. Otherwise, on a day-to-day basis, that individual must seek and maybe find shelter at night beneath a bridge, over a grate or in an abandoned building. These transitory, unstable and discouraging settings contribute to stress and worsening physical, mental, behavioral and emotional health. In conclusion, we want to partner with you, Councilmember Squilla, to endeavor to solve these problems. We'll be hosting a town hall in your district this spring, and we hope you'll join us to begin this partnership. Thank you very much.
My name is Susan Poston. I am reading a testimony on behalf of my friend and neighbor, Ms. Carol Junius, who's over here, and she's the mother of Nicole Bartlett, who's being honored today with a special resolution for Women's History Month. In her mother's words, Nicole Bartlett is indeed an excellent person to celebrate during this Women's History Month in our city. Her extremely wonderful life and contributions to the people of Philadelphia have been exceptional in many ways. My daughter Nicole was born in Philadelphia and attended Catholic school in Hunting Park, graduating from Little Flower Catholic High School for Girls. She later attended Mercer Community College. From the beginning, Nicole has always been strong in what she believes. She is deeply influenced by her father, George Junius, who has recently deceased, to become the woman that she is today. She played an important role in her life, he did, and they were always very close. While Nicole was a young adult with the passing of her little brother, she chose to become a funeral director and to help those experiencing the loss of loved ones. But her first business venture was a business called Shop and Deliver, delivering food to people at home. God is first in Nicole's life, and that's why we are here today, because he has made the path for her to follow, and her path has blessed many people. She is raising three children, Jordan, Darren Jr. and Kylie, with her husband Darren, who is always at her, right there at her side with all that she does. Nicole and Darren and their children work together as a family. They have open daycares in addition to the funeral home. Beyond all this, they are looking to care for the needs of their community. Nicole's funeral work in particular has, offers dignity and space for families to celebrate the lives of their loved ones. Her work extends beyond the funeral work to help families in many ways to process grief, which has been so important to the people in her community. She's provided grief classes, insurance classes and assistance, and has gotten food and clothing. In fact, Nicole went as far as feeding families at St. Christopher's Hospital for the night. She keeps in touch with families that are still grieving. She started an event around Valentine's Day each year when families can gather, letters written to their loved ones in balloons that are released. Everyone in the community has lost someone. Her father and I, Ms. Carol Junius, have walked with her as she has traveled this road, and we are very proud of her. Nicole, you make our community proud. Keep up the good work.
We have Garrett Odwire, David Ford, Michael McDonough. May John Busby, Tess Filer and Kate Esposito also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and members of city council. My name is Garrett Odwire, and I'm the Associate Policy Director for the Philadelphia Association of Community Development Corporations, or PACDC. Thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony and support of Resolution 250221 condemning staffing and budget cuts at the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. PACDC is a leading voice in nonprofit community development organizations in Philadelphia, and our members are responsible for addressing key affordable housing needs across the city. We know the importance of having an adequately staffed and funded HUD and the important role these professionals play in administrating programs and funding. It is through partnerships with public servants at all levels of government that we have made significant progress towards building a more equitable Philadelphia. We share your outrage at these proposed cuts. They are cruel and they are senseless. Now is the time for strong local leadership to defend our affordable housing gains and protect our most vulnerable and at-risk residents. PACDC and our membership stand ready to work with you to ensure that this work continues whatever may come. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify in support of this resolution.
Good morning, Majority Leader Richardson, members of council. My name is David Ford, and I serve as the Vice President of External Affairs at the Philadelphia Gas Works. With me today from our management team are Naisha Chapman and Ken Anderson. We also have Mike McDonough, who's going to be speaking for us in a minute from Local 686. And our chief of staff was here a little bit earlier, Melanie McCotry. On behalf of our president and CEO, Seth Sapira, who sends his regrets for not being able to attend today, I'm speaking on behalf of PGW to thank council for recognizing our workers on the occasion of Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day. We are deeply appreciative of Councilmember Driscoll, happy birthday, for introducing the resolution and hope to have the support of all members of council. On a personal note, this resolution means a lot to me as I had the privilege of working as a staff member in this body for half of my career, for council members Happy Fernandez and Blondell Reynolds Brown. That history has given me the perspective of how hardworking each and every one of you are on behalf of the citizens of Philadelphia. So knowing how hard you all work, it's tremendously meaningful to PGW's employees that you recognize our work on behalf of the 500,000 customers that we have across Philadelphia. Every day, the men and women of PGW ensure safe, reliable, affordable and sustainable service for Philadelphians. From service visits to our homes and businesses, to extraordinary events like being among the first to arrive at the scene of the recent plane crash in northeast Philadelphia, PGW employees have efficiently and bravely served the people of Philadelphia since our founding in 1836. I'll close by mentioning one of the main things we are proud of is our work on the behalf of our low-income customers, and thank you to councilmembers Landau, Brooks, Harity, Lozada and Bass, who have done videos in collaboration with us for, for Lyheep, and I think there's a couple more coming in that are in the pipeline. And we have an event next Wednesday, the 26th, that we're collaborating with Speaker McClinton. Information is on your desks for that, and we also would welcome to collaborate with you any and all times for the people of Philadelphia. Thank you so much for the recognition.
Good morning, Councilwoman Richardson. Good morning, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Richardson and council. My name is Mike McDonough, and the Vice President of the Gas Workers' Union, Local 686, UWA. Today I'm joined by my union brothers from the executive board, Joe McGarrett, Jesse Gill and Jim Bakeoven. On behalf of our president Keith Holmes, who cannot be here to attend, and all the hard-working union members of Local 686, we are honored and humbled to receive this recognition by city council. Thank you, Councilman Driscoll, for introducing the resolution in honor of the natural gas utility workers, and we encourage all members of city council to please vote yes on this resolution. Local 686 members include our field operations employees working in the streets of Philadelphia, our gas processing members who refine and deliver the product, and our army of customer call center representatives that professionally and efficiently field nearly 1 million service calls every year. Additionally, our union office workers help with distributing over $80 million in social service support to Philadelphians who need assistance. Our field operations employees proudly built, maintained and restored 6,000 miles of natural gas infrastructure. Infrastructure that runs our city, heats our homes and businesses and cooks our food, all while keeping Philadelphians safe. Local 686 has been providing these services since our locals founding in 1937. We are proud that our partnership with PGW, Local 686, secured economic stability for generations of families in Philadelphia throughout good-paying union jobs. We look forward to serving our customers and the city of Philadelphia for years to come. Thank you again.
We have John Busby, Tess Filer, Kate Esposito. May Barbara Gurley, Julian Rios and Michael Kane also make their way to the podium.
My name is John Busby. I'm a member of Power Interfaith, and I want to address Bill Number 250221. Arch Street United Methodist Church is in District 1, Mark's Willow's district, and we would like to invite him to a town hall later in the spring. We want to partner with him. I also work at Arch Street United Methodist Church as a sexton. I deal with homeless, our population, every day signing people in. I deal with homeless, our population, every day, signing people in. And I feel a deep appreciation for their struggles because I myself was homeless nine years ago. So I know what it's like. I've been there. So that gives me a unique opportunity to help this population. I'm also concerned with our unhoused people, population, because homelessness is increasing in the last couple of years. And we see many, many more guests every day. We register them into the system. So I know it's a problem. And I really am concerned for the homeless population because we're living in a city where affordable housing is going through the roof in a city that is the most poorest. So please, it is time to act now. I would also like to invite every council member to come over Monday through Thursday in the morning to see what we're doing over there. It's important work. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tess Filer, speaking in support of Bill 250221. I'm also a member of Power Interfaith, representing Arch Street United Methodist Church, which is in Councilmember Squilla's district. Arch Street's nonprofit, The Center, is a drop-in center providing daytime services to our unhoused, unsheltered neighbors. I'm sure you all see the line outside of the building, either walking by it to or from City Hall. You can literally look out that window right now and see the line coming in for our lunch hour. As a Director of Congregational and Community Development, I'm responsible for advocating on behalf of my congregation and the unhoused folks that I provide case management for every day. We might all know someone who was unhoused. Maybe we were unhoused or got close to it, or had we not had family or friends to stay with, we also would have been. I'm actually closer to homelessness than to owning my own home, and I earn a full-time salary. I applaud our City Council members advocating for rental assistance and application fee limits and looking into AMIs. I'm also incredibly afraid. Since the Kensington encampment sweeps, we have seen 1,000, 1,000 new participants. I complete their housing assessments. I help them complete applications to restore their lost or stolen IDs. I sit on the phone with them for 40 minutes, their entire session waiting on hold with the county assistance office. And I'm here because I need you to reduce and remove barriers to allow our unhoused and unsheltered neighbors to not fall through the cracks because housing justice is not justice if it isn't justice for everyone. We recently shared some solutions at Council President Johnson's roundtable, and we've invited him to come and take a morning to talk to people and hear their actual stories. And in conclusion, we also want to partner with you, Councilmember Squilla, to try and solve these problems. We'll be hosting a town hall in the district in the spring, and we hope you'll join us to begin this partnership. And I also invite any of you to spend a morning with us and hear directly from your unhoused constituents who can't get in to testify because their IDs have been stolen or thrown out amid street sweeps. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Esposito. I am a member of Power Interfaith. I represent the Philadelphia Ethical Society, which is in Council President Kenyatta Johnson's district. I am deeply concerned about the rising rent costs, property taxes, and increased displacement in our city. I've had conversations with several people in my congregation and neighborhood who are also concerned, and some of them have experienced homelessness or near homelessness. So I wanted to thank Councilmember Landau for this resolution 250221 condemning the defunding of HUD, which will have a devastating effect on the city's poor and working families who are in desperate need of housing. It is why the city has to step up and do everything possible to solve this housing crisis. In conclusion, we want to partner with Council President Johnson to try and solve these problems. We will be hosting a town hall in his district in the spring at the Salt and Light Church. We hope he'll be joining us to continue this partnership. Of course, the rest of council is also welcome. Thank you very much for your time.
We have Barbara Gurley, then Julian Rios, Michael Kane, May Nicole Bartlett, Doreen Bartlett, Reverend Stephanie Evans, and Margie Witz also make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name is Barbara Gurley, and I'm a member of Power Interfaith, representing Old First United Church of Christ, which is in Councilwoman Squilla's district. I'm deeply concerned about the rising rent costs, property taxes, and increased displacement in our city. I've had conversations with people in my congregation and neighborhood, and they're concerned too. I lived in my apartment building for almost 36 years. My building was located in West Philly. It was old and had a lot of issues, and I could not afford to move. I was hoping to eventually move into senior housing. I'm a retired from the City of Philadelphia library assistant, and I get a pension and Social Security. I live check to check and have almost no savings. May 5, 2024, my apartment building caught fire. My brother was living with me until he got senior housing. I stayed in the Red Cross for three days, and my brother went to stay with his friend. My building was condemned. The property owner gave me back maze rent plus utilities. The organization where I volunteer rented a townhouse on a college campus. I could stay till August 1 until the students returned. The rent at the townhouse was low, and I was able to save money to get an apartment. My income's too high for senior housing. There's at least a two-year waiting list. Apartments for rent are online, and I don't have the computer skills to fill that out. So I helped fill out the applications, including scanning my signature. The only apartment that was available to rent by August 1 was a studio in Germantown. It was the only apartment I could afford in that building. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Good morning, council members. My name is Julian Rios. I am the Bilingual Collective Impact Coordinator at SEBA, a coalition-building organization in Philadelphia's Latino community and the backbone to the Latino Equitable Development Collective. We applaud City Council for considering Resolution 250221, calling attention to and seeking to stop the devastating cuts to staffing and funding at HUD. These cuts will worsen Philadelphia's affordable housing crisis and disproportionately harm vulnerable communities. We want to take advantage of this opportunity to also applaud City Council for working with the mayor on the Housing Opportunities Made Easy Initiative. The cuts in HUD staffing and funding highlight the importance of putting together a strong home initiative. We also urge you to keep enhancing Philadelphia's capacity to produce affordable housing by reforming the Philadelphia Land Bank and by supporting our community development corporations. CDC is our community-based agents of change that address the challenges of affordable housing in many ways, not just through brick and mortar work. Muchas gracias for the opportunity to speak with you today and for keeping the dream of affordable housing alive for many people in Philadelphia.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Kane. I am also from Power. I'm actually the Board Co-Chair of Power, the largest interfaith organizing effort in Pennsylvania. And I'm the pastor at Old First Reformed United Church of Christ. In 1986, the mayor asked congregations to open their doors to homeless folks because the city didn't have enough beds. We were the first congregation to do it. We did it all the way through until two years ago when we started building Old First House, permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless people. We're about ready to welcome the first residents in. We've done that with the help of Councilwoman Squilla, the funding from the city and the federal government. We're very, very thankful for that. But we know that 34 apartments isn't going to make the kind of difference we need in this city with our homeless folks. I decided, because of our Affordable Housing Campaign of Power, that I was going to begin speaking to the homeless people that we serve each week about the issues in their housing. And the stories are all over the place with all kinds of difficulties. The one I want to tell you today is just to give you a flavor of what it's like on the streets. So there's a woman named Stephanie that's been coming to us for years, was homeless for years, finally got a house. And it's government funding for a private apartment, but the building wasn't in very good shape. Last week, there was a fire there. Stephanie can't go back, kind of like my Prishner-Barbara story. There was a fire there in part because the building's not kept very well, and the doors don't lock. And so people also looking for home come in. Now the city's come in and realized there's all kinds of funding, all kinds of issues with the building, and so it can't open. Stephanie is a trans woman who doesn't find herself safe in shelters, and she's now back in the streets. We're going to be having a meeting with Councilwoman Squilla, and we hope to keep working with our councilmen and all the council to solve this problem. Thank you.
We have Nicole Bartlett, Doreen Bartlett, Reverend Stephanie Evans, Margie Witz, and May Zane Dodson, Bianca Solari, and Elaine Gonzalez Johnson also make their way to the podium.
Reverend Stephanie Evans?
My name is Margie Witz. And we're here on behalf to speak and honor Nicole Bartlett, who we've known since she was a child and grew up in the neighborhood and has exceeded beyond our wildest dreams all her achievements. Nicole and my daughter grew up together. Dr. Ayesha Adoffes and Nicole have really come to Philadelphia, been an asset and been valuable to the city and the improvement of the city. Nicole served as a beacon of hope for grieving families in the nice town, Logan, Germantown, Huntington Park areas and beyond. Nicole assists families beyond home-going services. Her ministry has allowed families to grieve with grace. That is a genuine social responsibility and accountability. She's building generational wealth in the community and a legacy for her own children. She's creating a piece of Wall Street right here in the 4,400 block of North Germantown Avenue. Councilwoman Cindy Bass, pay attention. Beautiful daughter, a compassionate visionary and a savvy businesswoman. Community liaison for the betterment of family, friends, and community. She's example of the Philadelphia sisterly, brotherly love, sisterly affection and brotherly love. And she is a woman history maker here in Philadelphia in March of 2025. I'm just going to leave you with a scripture, partially a Proverbs 31 woman. Not going to read the whole thing, but this is so Nicole. She brings her food from afar. She also arises while it is yet night. And she provides food for her household and a portion for her maidservants. She considers her fields and buys it. From her profits, she plants a vineyard. She girds herself with strength and strengthen her arms. She perceives that her merchants is good. And her lamp does not go out at night. She stretches out her hands to the distaff, and her hands hold the spindle. She extends her hands to the poor. Yes, she reaches out for the hands of the needy. She is not afraid of snow for her household. For all her household is clothed with scarlet. She makes tastrey for herself. Her clothing is fine linen and purple. Her husband is known in the gates. She makes linen and garments, and she sells them. She shall rejoice in a time to come. She opens her mouth with wisdom, and on her tone is the law of kindness. She watches over her ways of her household and does not eat the bread of idleness. Her children rise up and call her blessed. Her husband also and praises her. Many daughters have done well, but she excels them all. Charm is deceitful, and beauty is passing. But a woman who fears the Lord, she shall be praised. Give her of her fruit of her hands, and let her own works praise her in the gates and in the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ja Datsin, but many know me as Coach Ja. I'm a mother of two, a Nike trainer, certified Pilates instructor, and lifelong advocate of wellness. Movement has been at my heart. Movement has been at the heart of my journey, not just as a passion, but as a means of empowerment, healing, and community. Standing here today, receiving this resolution from the city that raised me, is a full-circle moment. I was born and raised in West Philadelphia, where my journey and movement began at eight years old at Point Breeze Performing Arts Dance Center. Dance led me to the Creative and Performing Arts High School. And from there, I went to Spelman College, where I studied comparative women's studies, an experience that deepened my understanding of representation in the spaces where we deserve to take up. For a long time, I believed success meant leaving. I pursued a career in creative production working in brands like Nike, Ogilvy Camp Grizzly, and Westbrook. And while living in New York City, I trained for the New York City Marathon, a journey that led me to start run clubs in Brooklyn and Oregon, creating space for those often overlooked in fitness. But despite all of that, it wasn't until I returned to Philadelphia, became a mother, and truly stepped into my calling that I realized what fulfillment actually meant. Through Coach Ja Pilates Club and the Wellness Crawl, my mission has been to disrupt the norms of wellness, ensuring that Black women and men feel seen, supported, and limitless. Whether in a Pilates studio, a solid court class, a wellness retreat in Ghana, West Africa, or a citywide event, my goal is the same, to build community access and empowerment through movement. Toni Morrison once said, "Your real job is that if you are free, you need to free somebody else. If you have some power, then your job is to empower somebody else." That is the heart of my work, to create space where it didn't exist, to lift as I climb, and to make sure that wellness is not just a privilege, but a right. I wouldn't be here today without the people who have shaped me. To my mother, who is here with me today, thank you for showing me resilience and for always believing in me. To my children, you are my greatest motivation, my reason for pushing forward, and for my daily reminder of what that truly means. And to Philadelphia, thank you for giving me the ambition and the dream to the foundation to make those dreams a reality. The city has given me the best chapters of my life, and I'm honored to give back to it. And to anyone who has ever felt like success was out of reach, like the space you deserve didn't exist, let this be your reminder that you don't have to wait for permission. Create it, claim it, you belong here. To those pushing for change in their own way, keep going. Your work matters. Thank you to Ketsi Lozada and the city of Philadelphia for this honor. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, Councilwoman Lozada. I'm truly grateful and honored to have the opportunity to share about my journey and the work we're doing at Philly Girls Who Walk. My name is Bianca Solari, and I've been living in Philadelphia for the past nine years. When I first moved to this city, I was passionate about participating in group fitness classes as a way to not only stay healthy, but to meet new people who have since turned into lifelong friends. Despite my love for fitness, I still struggled with unhealthy habits and battled with my mental health. In November of 2021, I made the decision to embrace sobriety. This wasn't just a shift in my lifestyle. It was a complete transformation that allowed for a new life and led to creating Philly Girls Who Walk in May of 2022. What started as an idea for a healthy, free activity for me and my friends has blossomed into something much more. What began with a few walks around the city has turned into a thriving community. And since then, we've expanded into book clubs, social events, and more. We also partner with local gyms and businesses to offer opportunities for our members to try new activities and explore ways to enhance their physical and mental health. We're more than just a walking group. Philly Girls Who Walk has become a space where women can support each other and inspire each other to live their most authentic lives. The connections we make along the way are invaluable, and they remind me every day that we are all in this together. While I run this group alone, I am nothing without the support of my friends and the businesses and the people who believe in our mission, especially Councilwoman Lozada. Thank you so much. And together, we are creating a healthier, more connected Philadelphia, one step at a time. Thank you.
We have Elaine Gonzalez. May David Alexander Jenkins, Haley Ann Schiller, Adal Muzika, Jared Maruksa, and Matt Karen also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Elaine Gonzalez Johnson, and I'm here to discuss the resolution proposed by the amazing Councilwoman Ketzie Lazada, honoring and recognizing women in the city of Philadelphia who are leading impacting initiatives in health, wellness, and fitness. As we celebrate Women's History Month, I want to remind you of one of the most powerful things we can do as women: prioritize our wellness. This is why I created Latinas in Motion, a community where women of color, specifically Latinas, could prioritize wellness, supporting each other in health and sisterhood. This is why I also launched the Crowned and Grace Women's Ministry at Response to Grace Church, to give women a space to nourish their faith, build community, and grow spiritually. This is also why I'm the host of the Mogul Mommy Podcast, where I share tips and tools about achieving whole-life success and creating harmony. With every single thing that I do and being exactly who I am, I am often told that I do too much. But I'm here to remind every woman in this room, keep taking up space. We are created with so much purpose. We have talent, skills, gifts, and God-given anointing. It's our responsibility to use every single thing God has given us. And here's what I know for sure: wellness isn't just physical. It's about finding balance in every single season of our lives. This month, let's honor the women who have came before us by taking care of ourselves, standing in our power, and reminding each other that we are worthy of health. We are worthy of joy, and we are worthy of peace. Because when we thrive as women, our families thrive, our communities thrive, and we truly change the world.
Madam Chair, David Alexander Jenkins, I ride in favor of resolution introduced by Councilman Berlando condemning our dear leader for reprehensible actions concerning housing and urban development. Philadelphia, we are under attack. A war on our communities has begun, slashing funding for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, an institution born out of the weary years and silent tears of all of us, which was created to ensure every American has a safe and affordable housing. We declare and defend that we in Philadelphia are not comfortable leaving working families, seniors, and most vulnerable people out in the cold, and that we are a city where Housing Authority provides twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty public housing units and where an additional twenty-two thousand six hundred families receive housing vouchers, a city where approximately eight hundred thousand neighbors reside in housing owned and supported by the PHA, a city that still has a population of five thousand unhoused residents. We declare again and again and again from this very chamber that with a resounding voice that housing, Mr. Trump, is not a privilege, it is a right. It was Lyndon B. Johnson who founded the HUD as a part of his Great Society, a vision for America where economic and radical inclusion recognized a historically and systematically marginalized nation. Some sixty short years on, we fed a pervasive lie, one that dishonors the dignity of the marginalized, one who, for many of us, whose ancestors were stolen, beaten, enslaved, or running away from tyranny, built this very nation. A lie bound to the idea that in some way, shape, or form, we are made better by this root mislabeled, misrepresented as efficiency. No, make no mistake, this is not efficiency. This is a calculated act of cruelty, one that will gut our communities, displace our families, and escalate the housing crisis already gripping our city to levels unprecedented. No, 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 this is not efficiency unless you spell efficiency, E-V-I-C-T-I-O-N, because this is an eviction by design. It is not lost to me, nor should it be lost on you, that we wake up in a city in America promised, forged the city upon a hill, a beacon of justice, of equality, and of opportunity, a city that is no stranger to the resistance that the city not stand idly by the time where our rights and the people that we represent have rights which are stripped away. So I applaud Councilman Landau, and I stand ten toes down with her as she calls upon every Philadelphian, every advocate, every worker, every neighbor to rise up with arms, arming themselves with the fortitude necessary to face this war, rejecting the policies that defy of, by, and for the people.
Hello, my name is Helsani Schiller. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution for the PMA or the Philadelphia Museum of Art. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Burris Thomas for bringing that resolution here today. At the museum, I work as a conservation technician for gallery maintenance, but I also serve as president of Local 397, which is the union that represents cultural workers in Philadelphia. Some of you in city council might recognize me from the productive conversations we had last spring regarding the museum's resistance to applying the longevity pay that we fought hard and won in our first contract, a contract that we had to strike for three weeks to win. Unfortunately, longevity pay was just our most visible battle. Over the life of our first contract, we have had forty-nine grievances and several unfair labor practices filed, twenty-seven of which have had a financial component. The museum has actively and continuously engaged in anti-union techniques, frequently acting as though we do not have a union or a contract at all. With me today, I have four of my fellow employees and proud union members. You will hear from them about how much of a service the Philadelphia Museum of Art provides to the community and how union members are the ones making that happen. You will also hear about how working at the museum is not sustainable for people attempting to live and participate in the community of Philadelphia. The city currently provides ample funding to the museum. The PMA pays a single dollar in rent every year. Cultural institutions are more in need of support than ever, and civic funding is greatly felt unappreciated. But supporting the arts means supporting the workers who make the arts function. As we enter negotiations for our second contract, we ask city council to question the use of resources at the museum. The union would love to have more peaceful negotiations than we did last time, but the museum's actions thus far have given us little confidence in that being a reality. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adam Muzika. I'm a proud union member and the recording secretary of Local 397. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution put forth by Councilmember Thomas. Thank you, Council and Councilmember Thomas, for supporting workers and our union. I work at the PMA as a visitor services assistant, VSA for short. This position is the most front-facing at the museum. We are the first staff members that visitors interact with when they enter the museum, and we play an essential role in the day-to-day operations. Daily, VSA's interact with anywhere from dozens to hundreds of visitors. Yearly, the museum attracts an average of eight hundred thousand visitors, including school groups, tourists from around the world, Philadelphia residents, world-famous celebrities, athletes, Make-A-Wish families, Museum for All cardholders, and the Philly Fanatic. Yet, the stewards of this institution do not feel that they need to offer their staff, the very people that represent in the face of the PMA, basic respect or sustainable wages. I was hired in the fall of 2021 as a VSA at eleven dollars and fifty cents an hour. It took a historic three-week strike to raise the minimum pay rate at the PMA to sixteen seventy-five an hour. A starting yearly salary for a VSA is thirty thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars, twenty-seven percent lower than budget-class median as compared to other institutions of similar size and location. These are poverty wages paid to staff at one of the most prestigious museums in the country. I've watched the department almost completely turn over with new staff more times than I can count as my colleagues leave for hired-paid positions, often outside of the PMA. This constant turnover directly impacts the visitor experience. Management cannot retain passionate staff, and institutional knowledge is lost. I love my job and I care about our visitors. I can't afford to make a career at the PMA.
Hello, my name is Jared Marswatch, and I'm an audiovisual technician at the Philadelphia Museum of Art. A large part of why this position was attractive to me was the fact that it is a union job. I moved to Philadelphia with my wife in 2023 from Texas, where unions are constantly weakened by the state government, and I have become enamored with the city of Philadelphia and all of its facets, partly because union labor and working people thrive here and are actually represented by their city government. Since working at the PMA, I have become extremely proud of the work that I do. My job includes installing audiovisual artwork for the people of this city to enjoy, as well as setting up and operating sound, lighting, and projection systems for public programs such as our Pay What You Wish family festivals that serve thousands of children in this city every year, Friday Night Lounge, and our recent Women's History Month celebration, and countless other events that have great cultural value to the city and its residents. I'm so proud to be able to help provide this cultural value to the city, and I would love to make a long-term career out of doing this. But at the moment, this looks like an unsustainable option because of comically low wages, inconvenient and expensive benefit options, lack of career trajectory, and near constant hostility from management toward the union and its members. For this reason, I call on city council to support Councilmember Thomas's resolution. Thank you, Councilmember Thomas, for your support, and thank you to the council for your time.
We have Matt Karen, John McMillan, Maylin Landis, and David Weisberg also make their way to the podium.
My name is Matthew Carrery, and I'm here to speak in support of the PMA resolution. I work at the Philadelphia Museum of Art in the Conservation Department, and I'm a member of Ask Me Local 397. I've been at the museum since 2017 and have lived in Philadelphia since 2012. My team at the Philadelphia Museum of Art is a patchwork of five part-time employees. At least two to three members of our team are working Monday through Friday because there is enough work to warrant it. Instead of hiring us as full-time employees, the museum is choosing to keep us part-time, barring us from medical benefits and forcing several of us to take on other jobs. Because there are no healthcare options for me at the museum, I get my healthcare through Pennsylvania State System, Penny. As wealthy of an institution as the PMA is, there's no reason it shouldn't be providing more full-time, stable employment, as well as healthcare benefits for its employees. I'm calling on councilmembers to hold the PMA Board of Trustees and the administration responsible for their financial decisions. Thank you, Councilmember Thomas, for inviting us to speak.
Hello, city council, and thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, for introducing the resolution on our behalf today. My name is John McMillan, and I work in the Events Department at the PMA. And I'm also a steward in the museum's union. If you've ever been to a concert on a Friday night, I find the musical talent for that event. It's an important event for many up-and-coming Philadelphia artists, and I'm very proud of the diverse talent that we invite to perform in one of the most beautiful public spaces in Philadelphia. I've been with the museum for nearly twelve years, and unfortunately, the relationship between staff and management has never been so hostile. Our management has taken an adversarial approach to its workforce, breaking its contract with the union daily. I started my career at the museum in the Visitor Services Department. My colleagues in Visitor Services are the poorest-paid and poorest-treated people at the museum. Over the last six months, their managers have started denying staff their earned, paid time off. It's hard enough to make ends meet, and this denial of pay is negatively impacting employees financially and emotionally. These denials are in violation of our collective bargaining agreement and will lead to labor arbitration and thousands of dollars in legal fees for the museum. This is not a prudent use of the museum's limited resources. We ask that the council pass Councilman Thomas's resolution. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn Landis of SmallStreetsPhilly.org. Regarding Resolution 250221, where once again, city council is condemning President Trump, this time it's regarding the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. City council would do well to focus more of its attention on our own shortcomings, specifically on our own Department of Licenses and Inspection and the devastation brought down on many of our neighborhoods because either the regulations or the inspectors or both are inadequate to the job of ensuring that buildings are in good repair in Philadelphia. Too many buildings, some of which are historically important, are deliberately allowed to deteriorate beyond the point of salvation as described in a recent Philadelphia Inquirer series, Crumbling City. At the heart of the problem is a culture of complacency, the Philadelphia shrug, if you will, as well as some real engineering challenges when it comes to problems such as the complete removal and a replacement of a row home and its possible adverse impact on adjoining properties. The good news is that these are all solvable problems if we seriously focus on them and give them our best efforts. Thank you.
We have David Weisberg, Mayo Bona Hagens, Wanda Walker, and Maddie Booth also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon, Council President Johnson, members of city council. My name is David Weisberg. I use he/him pronouns. And I am proud to serve as the Executive Development Communications Officer for Mazoni Center, Philadelphia's largest comprehensive health and wellness center, serving our LGBTQ community. When I learned earlier this week of the opportunity to come to city council to provide support for a declaration of this week as National LGBTQ+ Health Awareness Week in the city of Philadelphia, it felt like an important but rote exercise. For the past twenty-three years, this week in March has been a time to recognize our beautiful and diverse LGBTQ community and its unique health needs from HIV to endocrine disorder to other prevalent vulnerabilities. While we've made great strides in these areas, often through a partnership between the city and Mazoni Center, we've not yet met our goals, and there's much more work to be done. The sense that this was any kind of rote exercise, however, changed dramatically over the past couple days when news began to surface of the presidential administration's plans to potentially and perhaps very quickly shutter the CDC's Division of HIV Prevention, undermining decades of progress in our efforts to eradicate HIV. We should all understand this is not merely an attempt to deny vital healthcare to the LGBTQ community. It's an orchestrated campaign by this administration to deny the existence of LGBTQ people whatsoever. In this context, the declaration of this week as National LGBTQ Health Awareness Week in Philadelphia is not only a symbolic gesture, but an act of determination and defiance that our city will not step back in its efforts to provide the compassionate and affirmative care that our LGBTQ community needs and deserves. Indeed, it will require increased efforts and participation on our behalf. And so I urge members of city council not only to make this valuable declaration about this week of awareness, but even more importantly, to commit yourselves to increasing our partnership to care for some of the most marginalized members of our community. Our goal advanced in this proposal, which I will circulate to council for increased participation between the city and Mazoni Center, should be to eradicate HIV in Philadelphia and not, as the administration in Washington wishes, to ignore and erase the existence of a beautiful LGBTQ community that is a vital part of our vibrant city. Thank you.
No doubt. Obana Hagens, unseated council president and fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. I stand before you today not to speak against Donald Trump. That's not my focus. My focus is on the American freedmen, the very people this body continues to ignore. You found the time and the energy and the urgency to write this resolution condemning Donald Trump administration. You put your heads together, drafted language, and stood firm to say, "This is wrong." But where is the same passion when it comes to the American freedmen, the progeny of the emancipated, the cotton pickers, ones that hung from trees? Where is that same urgency? I submitted the redlining repair bill to this council over a year ago.
Mr. Hagens, Mr. Obama Hagens, can you also talk about the condemning of Trump, which is germane to the resolution ahead of you, sir?
No, it, germane or Tito, whatever. I'm staying exactly to this bill. And this is not my time being taken away, brother. You know, because you don't know what I'm going to continue with.
Proceed, sir.
You know, you know what's up. American freedmen deserve the same priority you gave this resolution. Where is the outrage for the billions of lost wealth, the families robbed of generational stability, and the economic despair that's left freedman communities vulnerable for crime and violence? You say you want to reduce crime, yet you ignore one of the root causes of crime, economic deprivation. It's very possible that if freedman home devaluation had not been deliberately devalued, right? Maybe the drill killings wouldn't have been happening. Maybe the crime and violence that we see...
Can you speak on the title of the resolution, please?
I am speaking on the resolution, but you're interrupting the council president. Council president, you're not being right, brother. If I was a Jewish person standing up here... If I was a Jewish person standing up here, you wouldn't stop me from speaking.
Thank you, sir. That's enough. Please call the next speaker.
Wanda Walker and Maddy Booth.
Please begin, Ms. Walker.
Good morning, good afternoon, beautiful people. My name is Wanda Walker, and as always, I'm going to speak about generational wealth. So I would like to make a proposal or a resolution that seniors should not have to pay property taxes. After 30 years of paying property taxes, they should get an abatement. You should not have to be poor or struggling to get a tax abatement. They've done their part, and now we have to find other ways to get revenues. I think, from hearing everyone speak today, that there is a housing hustle going on. From 2020 to 2024, 53,000 people left Philadelphia. So where is the urgency for 30,000 new units? We have now discovered that everything our developers build are generally not affordable for the average Philadelphia person. Problem is, we have low wages, and our median income is only $35,000. We are the number-one poorest big city. So we need to build our workforce. That means educate our children in the trades and the technology, and then they can get the jobs for the development that the developers want to do. Right now, I challenge everybody to go to a development site and find a black person working on that site, or a young person. It's a problem when they claim they're building something affordable that's not affordable for us, and we don't see us on those jobs. The jobs will make it possible for us to be able to afford what they're building. As it stands right now, only outsiders can afford the average house that's going up. Development starts at about 280.
Ms. Walker, how you doing? And you know, we welcome your comments, but the bill you're speaking on is talking about condemning Trump. Have nothing to do with housing, and so could you keep it to what the resolution is?
I hear people talking about condemning Trump, and I would like to say, don't focus so much on one person. We don't know if he'll make it through the whole term or not. We need to get ourselves together. I... I'm just telling the truth. You know me. We need to get ourselves together because funds are being cut, and we need the funding. But when we do get the funding, we have to make sure we put it in the proper hands in the proper places. And rehabbing is one-third the price of developing something from the ground up. It would also supply jobs to the smaller contracts. So I'm just trying to use a little bit of common sense here. We need to get our kids educated for the development that Philadelphia is trying to do. Thank you. You sure you don't want me to do another five minutes?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and members of council. Good morning, or I don't know if it's afternoon yet. My name is Maddy Booth, and I am the proud CEO of Vetri Community Partnership, a local nonprofit founded by chef Mark Vetri and restaurateur Jeff Benjamin to provide... to nourish minds, bodies, and communities with nutrition education through cooking. I'm thrilled and excited that Councilmember Thomas, and hopefully council, will recognize the need to mark March as National Nutrition Month here in Philadelphia. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about why nutrition through cooking is important to build a healthier and happier Philadelphia. Now, I know what at least some of you are thinking. Here comes another lady to lecture us about eating our vegetables. And you're a little bit right about that. Vetri Community Partnership's programs offer a really unique opportunity for kids and people of all ages to learn how to cook using nutritious ingredients, accessible techniques, and delicious recipes. Our talented educators put the tools, including knives, into people's hands and offer age-appropriate instruction in how to cook nutritious, delicious recipes that help build a love of cooking and eating food that tastes good and nourishes your body. We teach anyone, any age, any skill level, any socioeconomic status, how to cook. Cooking and nutrition go hand in hand. Research shows that self-perceived cooking skills, believing you're a good and capable cook, leads to individuals making more nutritious choices for themselves and their families. This is particularly important in Philadelphia, where data has shown that kids eat fewer than one serving of vegetables per day. Diet-related health conditions like hypertension and diabetes also impact adults across the city. While we can't prevent and manage disease entirely through cooking and nutrition, we can certainly help people gain the skills and the confidence to cook and eat well. With our Food and Nutrition Security Partners and the Task Force newly formed by City Council, we will continue to work to make Philadelphia a healthier, more joyful place to live. On behalf of our team, hi, team, I am grateful to be here for the opportunity to talk to the esteemed members and members of the public about the importance of nutrition and cooking. And if you haven't yet, join us for a free cooking class. Please come by. I do recognize some faces. You have been in our teaching kitchen. You can find more information at our website, vetriccommunity.org, and we look forward to seeing you all in our teaching kitchen.
Y'all got any tofu?
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
Thank you very much. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250221?
A resolution condemning the Trump administration for its reprehensible actions to drastically defund the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, which will have a devastating...
Proceed, please.
...which will have a devastating effect on the enforcement of fair housing laws, damage communities, and escalate the affordable housing crisis.
The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250221.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the Resolution Number 250221 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240427-AA?
An ordinance amending Section 14-305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Nonconformities" by providing further provisions on changes from nonconforming uses, all under certain terms and conditions.
Member Young, do you want to be acknowledged before I call up the bill? The chair recognizes the gentleman from the Fifth Councilmatic District, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity on what this bill does. There seemed to be some confusion. What this bill does is prevent bad actors from returning to a use that they have already abandoned, right? And essentially, when it comes to zoning, I mean grandfather uses, if you are considered to be abandoned, your grandfather use, once you change your use. And this particular piece of legislation just clarifies that by saying, if you abandon a grandfathered use without a zoning permit, which you are legally obligated to get a zoning permit for whatever use change you have, unless it's a single family, you're obligated to get a zoning permit. And what this legislation does is says, if you change your use without getting a zoning permit, then you cannot go... you don't have the benefit of going back to that grandfathered use by right. And so that's what this legislation aims to protect communities by allowing communities, some say, when there is a change in use from a grandfathered use to a new use. And so I've been working with my colleagues on this legislation, worked with the administration on this legislation, worked with stakeholders on this legislation. And when it comes to the overall arching of nonconformities, the administration and the planning commission folks specifically said that, yes, we need to take a look at this entire section of the code. We were waiting on some changes. We never received that. So we moved forward with just working with the stakeholders that we've been working with on the legislation. But I want to thank my colleagues for their robust conversations around this legislation. We've, again, made some changes to exempt certain districts from colleagues who felt that this legislation would impact their district differently. I respect that wholeheartedly. But I'm going to ask my colleagues today for a yes vote on this legislation as we look to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of some of the residents in the city.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
No.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
No.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 15. The nays are two. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250066?
An ordinance amending Chapter 11-200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Openings and Excavation in the Streets" to impose additional penalties on violators of underground permitting requirements under certain terms and conditions.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity for a motion.
Sorry, Council President. I make a motion to amend the bill? Is that what I'm doing?
Yes, you are.
Yep, I'm sorry.
You're amending Bill Number 250066? Has a copy of the amendment been circulated to all members of council?
Yes, Council President. I have it in front of me now. Thank you, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 250066. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the amendment to Bill Number 250066 be adopted. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250100?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewall café in the vicinity of 177 Markle Street, Philadelphia, PA 19127, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 16. The nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250? Council will be at ease. Councilmember Thomas, would you like to be voted aye or nay on the last bill?
Aye.
Thank you. 17 to 0 for Bill Number 250100. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250147?
An ordinance authorizing Philippian Baptist Church or a subsequent owner to install, own, and maintain an encroachment at 5801 North Broad Street, Philadelphia, PA 19141, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 17. The nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing March as National Nutrition Month in the city of Philadelphia to raise awareness of the importance of nutrition education and healthy eating habits and to recognize the contributions of Vetri Community Partnership in promoting community health wellness introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing March 2025 as creative in nighttime economies and arts in Education Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings on the status, conditions, operations, and economic factors at the Philadelphia Museum of Art to ensure the future of the city cornerstone as we prepare to welcome the world in 2026, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I definitely want to recognize Councilmember Jones, the district councilperson for the museum and the great work that he does. As long as yourself, Council President, who's on the board of the museum and as a collective body, we're always concerned about the workers there. So with that energy and with the support of my colleagues, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring victim-witness services of South Philadelphia for 35 years of dedicated service to those affected by violence in South Philadelphia and across the city, introduced by Councilmember Jones on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes the Chair of Public Safety, Councilmember Curtis Jones, for a motion on the resolution.
On your behalf, Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of the Honorable Phyllis W. Beck, retired judge of the Superior Court, who was a treasured member of the Philadelphia legal community, philanthropist, trailblazer, and mentor, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring March 17 through the 21st, 2025, as a National LGBTQ Health Awareness Week in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing women in the city of Philadelphia who are leading impactful initiatives in health, wellness, and fitness that empower, connect, and uplift women by Councilmember Lasada.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Lasada for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and expressing gratitude to Nicole Bartlett for her work helping grieving families cope with loss and mentoring young women in Philadelphia and across the country on the occasion of Women's History Month, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the motion... that the resolution is adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the dedicated employees of the Philadelphia Gas Works in recognition of Natural Gas Utility Workers Day on March 18, 2025, introduced by Councilmember Driscoll.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the resolution should be adopted. It has the moving property second that the resolution should be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Today for Women's History Month, I want to recognize an outstanding Black woman business owner, Nicole M. Bartlett, with her business, Nicole M. Bartlett Funeral Home. She has succeeded in the male-dominated industry and served as a guiding light for countless grieving families. She puts the service at the center of her work, offering free workshops and counsel, and consultations, and mentoring young women in the industry. She is a gem in her community and in our city, and I'm so glad to have a chance to honor her here today. So thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you. Young, Claire, it's okay. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nicole Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a couple of things I wanted to kind of talk about today, but I think a lot of it's been hit up during the public comment. So let me just direct our friends and colleagues that after our session today, I invite you all to join us for a very important briefing on cooperative businesses. Some may recall that we did call 2025 the Year of the Cooperative, kind of keeping in that pattern that Councilwoman Bass did some years ago. We'll hear from local and national cooperative leaders about how these models empower workers and strengthen our economy. And if great conversation is enough, we've got some great food. My alleged director just texted me and said the tacos are set up and looking real tasty. So if you're hungry, come by and grab you a bite. The briefing will be catered by Taco Taco Mexicano, a worker-owned cooperative. So come hungry and ready to learn. I believe that you will benefit greatly by this briefing. Thank you very much, Council President.
You're welcome. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? The chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
No speeches, Council President. Just on standby to close out session.
Absolutely. Your light is on. The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to wish a very happy birthday to our colleague Mike Driscoll and a just one-day happy birthday to Jimmy Harity. I think we may have set the record this year for birthdays on or about Thursdays, I think. So we'll do a little count on that. This is a very special year. Anyway, thank you. Today I introduced a resolution honoring my longtime friend and mentor to many, the Honorable Phyllis W. Beck. Phyllis was a pioneering member of the Philadelphia legal community, a philanthropist, trailblazer, and a mother. She was the first woman to serve on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, which is especially impactful to recognize during Women's History Month, as she opened the door for so many women to pursue careers in the legal profession and in public service. She was appointed to the bench forty-four years ago and went on to serve as a fierce advocate for reforms to create a more equitable justice system. I was so lucky to have known her and learned from her, and I'd like to thank her and her family members and friends who showed up today and came out to celebrate her legacy. She will be dearly missed. Today I also introduced a resolution recognizing this week as National LGBTQ+ Health Awareness Week in the city of Philadelphia. As a member of the community, I am hearing the fears of the LGBTQ+ community in the wake of constant attacks from the Trump administration. In fact, just yesterday, the Trump administration discussed cuts to the CDC's domestic HIV program, including funding for prevention. Decisions like these aren't rooted in science, they're rooted in ignorance, and our community, especially its most marginalized members, are very, very fearful. The LGBTQ+ community is disproportionately impacted by a wide range of health threats, and as we recognize National LGBTQ Health Awareness Week here in Philadelphia, we reaffirm our commitment to health equity and access to care for all. The disparities faced by LGBTQ+ individuals are not just statistics. We are real people who deserve to be treated with respect and compassion. I urge my colleagues, healthcare providers, and every Philadelphian to take this week as an opportunity to learn, engage, and act. Finally, I also introduce a resolution condemning President Trump and his administration's decision to suspend income-driven repayment plans and politicize the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. This choice is not just an attack on borrowers, it's an attack on working people, the LGBTQ+ community, undocumented immigrants, and those who serve the American public. I vehemently disapprove of Trump's policies and recommit to working tirelessly for those Philadelphia residents and anybody impacted by his executive orders. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just wanted to say a couple of things, and I'm sorry, I just want to pull something up really quickly, because I wanted to talk just briefly on the bill that we just passed today on the nonconformities. And I voted for the bill. You know, I want to thank my colleagues that voted for the bill. And I just wanted to remind everyone that a few weeks ago, I talked about a nuisance business in my district that was in business and is still in business right now. And when it opened up, it had no license to operate, which is required. It had no certificate of occupancy, which is required. It had done construction without the required permits and had illegal signage. The sale of tobacco was happening without a license, which is required. The sale of loose cigarettes, Lucy's, which is prohibited and illegal. They did tobacco sales on the same block as an elementary school, which is prohibited. There was a lack of heat and air circulation, which is required. There were exposed radiator pipes, which is a plumbing code violation. There were loose and exposed wires, which is an electrical code violation, and they were selling drug paraphernalia. And so, all of that combined, if this bill was in place when they set up shop, we would have been able to shut them down immediately because they would not have been able to rely on the zoning, which was actually in place previously. So again, I just really wanted to thank my colleagues who found themselves able to vote for that, what I think is going to be groundbreaking legislation. I also wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Siobhan Thompson, a proud North Philadelphia native and Dobbin's alum, and now its inspiring principal. You know, she has been walking the halls as a student to leading one of the city's largest schools, and Dr. Thompson's journey is a true testament to perseverance, passion, and the power of education. Earning her doctorate in education is not just a personal milestone, it is a victory for our entire community, and I would say for our entire city. She has broken barriers, uplifted countless students, and remains a shining example of excellence, dedication, and leadership. We are beyond proud of her accomplishments and grateful for her unwavering commitment to our young people. So again, congratulations, Dr. Siobhan Thompson. And I also wanted to share with Eighth District residents that my budget survey is still alive. If you live in the Eighth District and you would like to share your thoughts through the budget survey, it's on our social media, and there is a QR code, but you can also visit us at bit, B-I-T dot, B-I-T period L-Y slash Bass Budget, Bass Budget. That's B-I-T dot L-Y slash Bass Budget. Capital B for Bass and capital B for Budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Great idea, too, the survey with the QR code. Get ideas about the budget. Very forward-thinking, Member Bass. You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilman Katsy Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. As you are all aware, March is Women's History Month. This is a time to recognize and honor the achievements, contributions, and resilience of women, not just throughout history, but in the present day, who are taking action to make impact in our city. Oftentimes, we tend to focus on large-scale accomplishments, but each day, women throughout our city are doing small things to bring our communities together and make impacts on each other's lives. Today, I introduced a resolution recognizing the efforts of community organizations who promote both physical and mental wellness. Latinas in Motion, Philly Girls Who Walk, and Coach Zaya Piladi's Club are local organizations in our city who have built communities of their own through inclusive fitness programs. I am proud to have had them here today as my guests in council. These groups are resources for women to connect and find companionship. They have fostered a safe, inclusive environment for women throughout the movement, conversation, and shared, and a shared sense of love and support for one another. As we celebrate Women's History Month, let us continue to uplift and recognize the women and organizations in our communities who are creating these spaces, spaces where women are supported. By supporting their work and amplifying their voices, we continue, we contribute to a stronger and more inclusive city of Philadelphia. I'd also like to share that we are having a Thriving Together Expo Community Resource Fair in my district. All of you are welcome to join us on Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00 PM at Roberto Clemente Middle School, and share with your constituents as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes majority of the Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. First, I wanted to just acknowledge again our colleague, Councilmember Phillips, for earning his doctorate degree. I know we found out about that last week, but I'm sure it's been a hard journey to earn your PhD over these last several years while serving as a member of Philadelphia City Council. So kudos and congratulations to you. I also wanted to remind all of our colleagues that the Women of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Pennsylvania chapter are still here and are looking forward to the members of council stopping by to meet with them as they discuss their legislative priorities. Because there were so many members, we had to move them down to Conversation Hall on the second floor. So if you have any time in your schedule to stop by and say hello, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilman Mike Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin by thanking the St. Patrick's Day Observance Association for all their hard work in putting together a wonderful weekend. We had a great parade. Thank you, Mr. President, for joining us all day. I'd like to thank Mayor O. Parker. She was a big hit in her, in her green outfit. We certainly had a wonderful time, and these things just don't happen. A lot of work goes into it. And, Council President, you were there for honoring our grand marshal Patty Rooney and our Ring of Honor. So we appreciate everyone's well wishes over the weekend. It was just a wonderful, wonderful weekend. Councilman Harity, born on St. Joseph's Day, happy birthday. And lastly, I'd like to recognize a lifelong Philadelphian, a graduate of St. Stevens Parish on Broad Street, a graduate of Roman Catholic High School, Hall of Fame basketball player, Councilman Isaiah Thomas, last living player to play for Billy Markwood, a graduate of LaSalle College, a World War II veteran, Army, served in the South Pacific, American hero to me. My father, 100 years old today, Joseph Driscoll. And to quote a line from the movie Old School, "You're my boy, Blue." Happy birthday.
The chair recognizes the gentleman from the Fifth Council district, Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yesterday, my office, in conjunction with the National Alliance of Women Veterans, hosted a ceremony in honor of Women's History Month. I'm honoring women veterans in Philadelphia. Specifically, there were many of those lived in the Fifth Council district. So I want to thank Dr. Kathy Santos Bennett for partnering with my office and sharing her resources with us to allow us to celebrate those women veterans. Just news for residents of the Fifth Council district, my office in partnership with committed community mentors is hosting a grant writing party. So if you are a nonprofit, you're looking to start a nonprofit, you just want information on how to apply for grants, this event is for you. We have two dates scheduled. One is Saturday, March 22nd, the other is Saturday, March 29th. Times are 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it will be located at 3002 Cecil B. Moore Avenue in Suite C203. So this event is for anyone, specifically folks who live in the Fifth District, but anyone who is looking to gain insight on how to apply for grant funding. We are looking to provide you with some of that information to make sure your organization and your business is as successful as it can be. And I also want to thank my colleagues today for passing legislation, Bill number 2404278A, with a supermajority. So since coming to council, I've been focused on quality of life issues for residents in the Fifth Council district. And I just want the listening public to understand what this bill seeks to do. It seeks to protect communities by preventing a property owner from reverting back to a grandfather use when a new use is established without a zoning permit. So what that means is essentially, if we have a grandfather use and the zoning change for that use over time, typically when the zoning of a property changes, it's because that that use is no longer desired in that community. And because of this, no longer, this use is no longer desired, what we are seeking to do is if you change that use without a zoning permit, without legally going through the process of obtaining a zoning permit, which every single property owner must do when you change your use, unless it's a single family and some other limited circumstances, you're a bad actor. And so what we are seeking to do is prevent bad actors from going back to an undesired grandfather use by right. And we want to make sure that the communities have some say in that and allow folks to go through that zoning board process to make sure that the community is okay with that particular grandfather use, again, after someone has changed the use of their property illegally, right? And so I think that is the point that we have to stick to, is that they're changing the use of their property illegally. And so we should not reward them by allowing them to go back to a use that is not allowed under their current zoning because they did something illegal. And so that's, that's what we're seeking to do, is to, to root out bad actors in our city, to protect our communities, to allow our communities to have some say in what is happening in their neighborhoods. So again, I want to thank my colleagues. We've worked with all of our colleagues on this, on this legislation. We've worked with the Planning Commission, as I mentioned before, to try to just come up with legislation to, you know, look at nonconformities in general, right, and grandfather uses in general in our city. We've worked with stakeholders to, in, 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 in industry, to make sure that, you know, this amendment doesn't, the bill doesn't affect those who are good actors, right? We want to make sure we are penalizing bad actors for not obtaining the necessary permits that are required when changing the use. So again, thank, thank you, colleagues, for passing this legislation. I believe it's going to help us in the Fifth Council district as we look to make sure that we protect the public health, safety, and welfare of our communities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Young. There are no more speeches. The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations, Councilmember Young, on your bill being passed. Happy birthday to our colleagues. Congratulations to Councilmember Phillips. And with that being said, Council President, I move that council stands adjourned until Thursday, March 27th, 2025, at 10:00 AM.
It has the moving property second that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 27th, 2025, at 10:00 AM. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you all very much.